Welcome to the show, Dilip. How are you today this morning?
Thank you, Praveen. Thank you. Welcome to all the viewers of TV, TV five and Mana TV. So, thank you for having me here, sharing my views.
So, let's go deep into this, Dilip. The main context of this, the podcast is about Indo-Americans and NRIs. Anything, everything for Indo-Americans and NRIs. So, today I know that you have been in the race for Johns Creek City Council and I thought this is an opportunity for to introduce you to all the audience. Let me introduce Dilip Chanki. Dilip Chanki is a mayor, pro tem and city council member in Johns Creek. And Johns Creek, if you all do not know much about Johns Creek, Johns Creek is the number one city rated in this year and it is the safest city and it's also the number one city in the entire United States. It's the best place to live as well for twenty-five to twenty-twenty-five to twenty-six by the US News and World Report. And he has prioritized public safety, physical responsibility and expanded parks and green space to enhance the residents and also the quality of life. He is an engineer by virtue and is also an entrepreneur with twenty-five years of experience in IT and real estate. Dilip also holds an MBA from, in finance from Georgia University. Active in community service for more than a decade, he is passionate about civic engagement, inclusive communities and inspire future leaders. A lifelong adventurer, he also has trek, base camp and climbed Mount Kilimanjaro. More than all, Dilip is a very kind person and he has done a lot of things to Johns Creek as a city council member since twenty-twenty-one. And he is standing for the race to reelect and I would request every Johns Creek Indo-American and also the Asian community to vote, please vote. And we will get into more details of what Johns Creek is and then, you know, when to vote and what are the timing. So, Dilip, without any further ado, I just wanted to tell the audience about your journey, right? In one to two minutes, if you can tell from your journey from an entrepreneur to the city council member being in the legislation, that inspires the audience. How did you land here?
Definitely, Praveen. So, just a little background on myself. After my bachelor's degree in civil engineering, I came to United States back in nineteen ninety-one to do masters in environmental engineering. So, after that, I worked in that field for about five, six years in the engineering, pretty much in Texas and Louisiana. Then I started with a friend, started an IT staffing company back in nineteen ninety-seven in Jacksonville, Florida. Eventually, we decided Atlanta is the hub and we relocated to Atlanta in two thousand. I've been a resident of Johns Creek area from twenty-two thousand, so even before Johns Creek was formed. So, eventually, when I was interacting with the city, I felt like, looking at the high schools, I felt like I need to get involved. So, back in twenty-seventeen, I ran for school governance council. The way it happens is every high school or any middle school, elementary school, they have a governance body, like board of directors. They work with the principal to see the direction and like what we can do. So, that was an elected, like all the parents has to vote. So, I won back in twenty-seventeen. So, that's where my real like journey to serve the community started. And from there on, I pretty much helped the high school get their greenhouse from Fulton County School Board and getting approved. Back then, it was four hundred thousand dollar project, not easy one. School has never done it. Principal is like, okay, that's a big M one, we may not get it. I said, nothing wrong in asking. We asked the school, they came back and gave us a state-of-the-art greenhouse. So, principal was like, so appreciate you. So, people are still using it. After that, then I realized like, okay, we need to, like, most of the times, we always take the backseat. We complain, okay, this is not good, that's not good. Nobody is coming forward to serve the community. So, that's when I said, let me start getting involved instead of our local organizations, like regional organizations. I said, okay, let me, we have plenty of people to serve that. So, I got into the mainstream of serving on the city arts and parks and recreation, town center task force, art center, art, criminal nature preserve, that park in there. So, other than that, I was also involved in some organization called Shelter of Law. It's more for victims of domestic violence. So, we were used to work with them, provide them the temporary shelter, like a shelter and then train them on the skills to get into them. So, another thing I was proud of doing is there is an organization called SCORE. SCORE is like a subsidiary of SBA. So, what they do is they provide resources to the small business owners who has an idea to see, okay, it's really viable and how they can get the funding and direction. So, I used to mentor almost like a three to four small business owners every week. So, and I was, between all these things also, every city or county has a program called Fire Academy, Police Academy and the Leadership. For Johns Creek, I did all these things, Police Fire Academy, Johns Creek Police, Johns Creek Citizens Police and Fire Academy and Johns Creek Leadership. I did all these things. Once you get into these things, you'll really get, get to know exactly the needs of the citizens and the community. We always look at one side of the coin and say, okay, police department. So, if you go back and look at their operations, you get the complete picture. Once I got all these things, Praveen, I put my name into the race back in twenty-nineteen. You know that too, you've been there. So, twenty-nineteen, so that's the first time someone from this area really came forward to run for the local office, municipal office. So, I ran. Unfortunately, I wasn't successful. I came to the runoff, like, probably I'll explain in the later part of this thing what runoff means. But like general elections and runoff, I did two elections back in twenty-nineteen, got close but lost. From twenty-twenty, twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-one, I got a lot more involved. Basically, like every community, like spending twenty-five hours a week serving the local community. So, that really helped me in twenty-one. When I went back and ran again, I got the highest number of votes anyone could ever got in Johns Creek. And appreciation came from all the way from the governor. So, the, the point is get involved, get involved so that you can make a difference on how things work.
Excellent. Excellent, Dilip. I think that says it is not easy to, you know, just when you are elect, people will know about you. But there is a more than fifteen years of journey where you have spent with the community. That's amazing. And that also gives the audience like how difficult it is to win the race. It's not easy. And people think that, you know, once elected, Dilip will be very popular and seen everywhere and then he gets a lot of respect. But they, I want the audience to know what a day looks like when you are into the public service. Let them know like how your day starts and how your day ends in a typical day.
So, to your point, Praveen, this, we are doing it more for the passion and community service. This is not a paid job.
Absolutely.
It's not a paid job. We still need to have your primary source of income. So, the biggest question is how do you balance between the, your job, earning job, family, like city job and the community service? Like, again, we still need to get involved in. So, to me, I almost spending like a twenty to twenty-five hours a week, still balancing the other things. So, typical day, like usually our council meetings happens every other week on Mondays. But that meeting happens from like we go there at four-thirty and sometimes the meetings end at ten, eleven, sometimes midnight. So, it's not just the meetings every two weeks, even to prepare for that one, like we need to understand exactly what is happening. Because those meetings are more about discussion. So, to be prepared for those things, you need to be like understanding meetings with the city staff. That's one part for the city. So, residents, if they come back and say, okay, here is what our problem is, I come back and address them. So, it's, it depends on how much time you are willing to put in there. There is like, I'm saying like a lot of work, just that you need to decide for yourself saying, okay, here is the right balance. So, there are people who are spending less amount of time and more amount. So, the balance is what it matters. Make sure you have a right balance between the family life, business and the community service. So, that's the advice.
Amazing, Dilip. I see that how many hours you spend and you know what is the life balance between family and the profession and the public service life.
Yes, sir.
Amazing. Again, thank you so much for doing that for all the citizens of Johns Creek. And recently, in the past one or two years, I feel I heard that mayor pro tem achievement, right? In your past career. So, what does that mean to the individual citizens if you are a mayor, pro tem? Is that you are a deputy mayor or how do the citizens think about that? What's the responsibility?
So, the terminology is, the way you use is different, Praveen, but it is deputy mayor. It's more like a, so within, within the body of six council members and the mayor, we pick a deputy mayor, like who is contributing and who is value addition to the whole group. So, I was picked as a deputy mayor back in twenty-twenty-four. So, it's a two-year term. So, so city council and mayor saw the value addition that I'm bringing to the group and the city. So, they picked me as a deputy mayor for the last two years. So, yes, definitely my contribution, like I mentioned before, you already mentioned my background. So, I have the civil engineering, environmental engineering and MBA in finance from Georgia State University and the business background. So, I'm able to use all these things coupled together to like address the needs and like needs and projects within the city of Johns Creek.
Excellent, Dilip. I think it's not only from you. I have been in the meet and greet, the mayor saying hi about you, how you contribute. I just wanted to tell the audience, it's not like you tell and I tell. I heard directly from the mayor, what kind of contributions you have done throughout your term. That's, that's an amazing thing. And before getting into more details of what your accomplishment, I just wanted to tell the audience, what is the Johns Creek geography, what kind of population, what kind of, exactly the Indo-Americans in your area? So that we'll get an idea of how we all can support you.
Definitely. Praveen, if you look at Johns Creek, as Praveen mentioned before, we've been ranked number one best city in the country to live by US News and Wall Report. It's not really a local organization. It's from the national level. Out of eight fifty cities, they chose Johns Creek to be the best. So, on background of the Johns Creek, we, city was formed in two thousand six. It's less than twenty years old city. And our population is about eighty-four, eighty-five thousand. In that one, registered voters are about sixty thousand, okay? In that sixty thousand, like Indian, Indian origin NRIs are about six thousand five hundred to, between six thousand five and seven thousand registered voters. So, the, the biggest bottleneck I would say or the involvement is Indian origin people doesn't go out and vote. The turnout, I'm telling you, like less than ten percent. Usually, it used to be five hundred, six hundred people from over six thousand registered voters. So, that, I was able to pull it back to thousand back in there, but still that's low. So, more than anything else, like the Indian committee needs to get involved. As, as like maybe we'll go into the details further down, but once I got on the city council, I was able to work with a lot of residents on their issues. Like, I just didn't limit myself to Johns Creek. I, I get like a weekly, at least a call, one call from Forsyth County or the other area. So, it's, it's not just your like a region. So, we are able to help the, like extend the helping hand. So, we definitely need to be involved. Because when the mainstream realizes that the Indian committee voting doesn't change the outcome of an election, they would not really listen to any of our requests or needs. So, we should come back and involve in the local politics, voting mainly, voting and make sure that, okay, yes, we are contributing. It's a civic duty. That's an example for the future generations. So, we should do that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Dilip, I think you have given enough information, like out of six thousand, ten percent is like five hundred to six hundred people voting. Definitely, it's a very bad news and we all need to understand that when it comes to a problem, then you think about all these things. More than all, about your jobs, about everything, you have to be involved in the legislation. That will definitely help all of us. And it's a request for everyone to go vote and do the early voting, avail your civic responsibility and make yourself comfortable where you are living. So, as a city council, for the last four years, you have been doing a great job, Dilip. So, if I were to list out, what is to the audience, what are the major five issues or challenges which you have resolved?
So, let me start with the biggest one, Praveen, the public safety. So, as you listed in the beginning of the session that Johns Creek has been named the safest city. This reason, we make sure that we fund and support our public safety, the police and fire. We increased the spend in the last four years. Okay? We increased the number of officers. So, even today, like a, like the crime rate is lowest. Ours is the lowest in the neighboring cities or if you look at the real numbers, we are about seven point seven crimes per thousand residents compared to the national average, which is twenty-three. So, we are three times less. So, and we're still officers-wise, we are way better, way better. So, it's almost like one point four per thousand residents. But to really look at the ratio, we need to look at the crime rate too. So, based on all these three-dimensional factors, we are like staff well and we are taking care of the officers. So, that's one focus that we really put on. The second one is the finance. We made sure that we kept the taxes lowest. Johns Creek city taxes are the lowest in the county. So, we made sure that we kept the taxes low and funded every, like a new amenities. And as of today, our, we are financial position is very strong, triple A bond rating. Every city's financial is based on the rating. So, triple A bond rating is the best. We have that. Our net worth, net position, we call it net worth, like our terminology. So, our net position is close to half a billion dollars for our size of city and the lowest tax rate, it's a great accomplishment. So, financially, we are really in a good place. So, and investing the money in a good savings account and almost we are making two point eight million dollars per year, just interest income. So, so financially, we are really strong. So, the third thing is economic development. So, Boston Scientific moved into Johns Creek. That's a big thing. When they move, they started with a sixty, sixty-five million dollar budget construction. Like, so not really budget, but like a, the scope. By the time they completed, they increased the scope and said, okay, you know what, like, we want to make the research and logistics headquarters here. We want to add more, like a more tasks, more divisions into that one. So, they increase the scope and like scalability to almost like, by the time they're done, it's more than hundred million dollars and more than three hundred jobs. And we added like a new mall is coming up in the mixed development. It's called Medley. So, it is six hundred million dollar project that's being built in Johns Creek. There will be a vibrant town center area in Johns Creek. We are building another park behind the city hall, which is gonna be like a water body with amphitheater. If an event happens like outward, four thousand residents can sit and watch. So, that's gonna be a good one for a lot of Indian activities too. So, so, lot of things we did and we created a small business environment for the people, like businesses to have a licensing process much more easier. So, that is one area that we are still working and we need some more work in that area. The other one is parks, parks and recreation. So, we added, this opened a new park, Colicreek Park. You may have heard, Praveen, so that's really, really successful. People love it. So, that pretty much doubled our park space. And people are, there is still more some work to be done or phase two of that one need to be done. So, we will look at in the next four years. And added the small pocket parks. And on the, the one that you're talking about, the other park adding it, that's gonna be open next summer. So, that will be more connectivity between like establishing. So, parks are done, green space is making sure that. And the last one is the transportation. The transportation and connectivity. We did lot of road improvements, intersection improvements, connecting and mobility. So, right now, our focus is to make sure that people can get from point A to point B without getting in a car. So, that's like a, so we are adding like a tunnel, forty-foot tunnel under one forty-one. So, that way it connects east and west. Right now, it's just like major highway. So, people can't really get through that one. So, we are adding a tunnel, which we can come in a golf cart or bike cart. So, those are the big ones that we done and few other achievements is like we are ARC Green Communities, Tree City. So, we are making sure that we have a right balance between preserving the green space and the development.
Excellent. I also, apart from all these malls and also you said that the roads. So, are there any accomplishments across like the traffic zoning, safety? Safety you have already covered, parks you have already covered.
Yes.
Can you little bit touch upon the traffic and zoning that, what is the accomplishment during your last four years?
Okay. So, in the last four years, we made sure that all the bottlenecks are being taken off, Praveen. So, the intersections or the sidewalks, trails, okay? So, the next one, what we are looking at is, yes, like we did the constructions. So, right now, what I'm thinking of is using the advanced technologies, deep learning, advanced AI technology, get that mix into the traffic. So, basically, the traffic signals talking to each, each of those and the cars communicating. That way, our, our bottleneck is a peak hours, morning two hours and evening two hours, okay? So, if we can address those two crucial areas, rest is all in the place. So, we don't want to invest big on infrastructure, when we can do some of these, use AI technologies to make those things. So, other count, other cities are using it. So, we are evaluating, we are working with the Georgia Department of Transportation to, to try one of the corridors to see how we can do that. So, basically, you are from the technology, Praveen, you know exactly, that is the area that we can explore and use it for the benefit of the city. So, I'm, next four years, that's my task to use the technology and reduce the investment on like a, like a real construction work when we can streamline these signals and traffic through the AI technology.
Absolutely, Dilip. I think you gave a lot of information. That's amazing. So, from the public perspective, right? See, if you see all our Indo-Americans, they are very busy in their own life, only on the technology, private sectors, right? So, I also see now there is a major alignment getting into the government. You know, still they are into a contract positions, but they are not more into the public service and joining the government. So, I wanted to ask you, many people definitely might not know about this, SBA, right? If anyone want to really do a business, right? SBA, Small Business Association, right?
Administration.
Administration. So, how can, how can the Indo-Americans get more education on where they can plug themselves into SBA and learn a lot of things from that?
So, the one that I told you, like I was, as a volunteer, I was volunteering with the SBS CORE. So, SBA is very resourceful for the small business owners. So, when I was mentoring, so what CORE does is we come back and have a session with these small business owners or entrepreneurs who are, like some of them already gone, are planning on starting it. So, those sessions, we work with them to say, okay, with the idea. Sometimes, once they start putting the idea on a piece of paper and put the financial, they realize, okay, it's not a viable option. For people who think it's viable option, I used to like have regular sessions with them to guide them through. So, from the CORE, we provide them the links and the information on the SBA where they can get the financial help, technical help, like strategic help. So, SBA is a great resource and most of the, like, to your point, when I was mentoring it, there was only handful of Indians, I'm not even gonna say Indians, Asian community. Lot of people doesn't really know that like there's an SBA and they're, they provide helping hand for the small business owners. So, that has to be really pushed through to our Indians and Asian community. Praveen, so maybe through your channel, if you can say that, okay, the US federal government is offering this help, just go, use it.
But major challenge, Dilip, when I talk to people from the media, they always say that the, the time, what they give, it will be like two weeks, four weeks. Do you think it's like if anyone wants to, they can walk in without any opponent?
You mean like you're talking to SBA?
Yeah.
Okay, SBA is not walking those things, Praveen. It's more like online help, these things, like it's, it's not like a face-to-face meetings. It's like when it says CORE, it's all Zoom meetings and like those ones. So, so, and there are links. You won't really have to interact with the people in there. There are resources. So, like resources and the volunteers, like who can guide you, what, can guide you through the proper process and how it works. So, it's, if you are expecting to meet in person and talk about it, that's, that's not, that's not going to happen.
Excellent. I think this is a very important topic I wanted to bring because people need to understand what is SBA and how you can utilize their resources or services. And apart from that, I know that you have been in the school era, right? You have been serving in the different advisory boards or so. What are the real challenges you have encountered from the Asian communities? What do you, can you throw some challenges of what you have heard from the community?
Okay. So, both, the thing is involvement, Praveen. Lot of Indian and I could say more on the Asian too, they don't get involved in the mainstream. So, to you, to your earlier point, they just take care of their family, weekend, like have nice dinner, watch a movie and spend with the family. That's good. I'm not saying you take away. So, if you can spend an hour or two from a month serving the mainstream, like come, come back, help us the city. City has a lot of volunteer committees, okay? And anywhere, like all nonprofit boards within the city, like whatever your passion is, be arts, parks, okay? Like a, like beautification or gardening, any, anything of your passion, two hours is not, not that much asked from the community, Praveen. So, they can spend too. I want them to get involved in the mainstream. Yes, they are lot more involved in our regional or association organizations. That's a good thing. But have a balance. If you are spending like five hours in there, thirty, forty minutes spending here. So, I want them to have that right balance. So, that is the biggest thing that's missing in there. I've been pushing and I already told people like if you're interested, come talk to me. I'll put you on one of those committees. Already done like a, you know a few names, already nominated and they are serving on the community. So, they are definitely value addition. The best part is, we just need to get them there. Once they are there, they are committed and they will provide the value. So, just that we need to get them to that place.
Absolutely. I agree with you and I've been promoting this in multiple forums to be part of these meetings. You need to be representing yourself. You need to understand what's going on around you. Don't wait until the final notice comes, comes to you.
No, not only that, Praveen, that other thing is next generation. Because if, go talk to your kids. If you say that you are involved in the arts community or the parks or the like zoning or anything, they, they think that you are, we are part of this country. The country gave us so much, like education, okay? And the livelihood and we raise our family here. So, let's give it back. So, if you do that one, even, you're setting a good example for the next generation. So, you, I'm saying like have the right balance.
Excellent. So, definitely that is a learning from this, whoever sees, they definitely catch this and see how they can be part of the different boards or meetings to get connected, definitely, Dilip. So, for the youth, right? You have been supporting youth programs, you have been nominating. So, how about these young entrepreneurs or young leaders, how they can be part in the internships or what are their opportunities in the city?
So, that's another big one that I've been, I worked in the last four years and I'm pushing for that too. Praveen, like in the Colicreek Park, the one I named the biggest park, we added robotics and maker space and have a future provision to add incubation to that too.
Okay.
So, which, when I say robotics, because in the North Fulton area, in the schools, within the Johns Creek itself, their robotics team is much bigger than the football team, which means, yes, it is. So, we realized, okay, we, we have that void in there, we wanted to work. Along with that, I added that maker space and so when you say those things like maker space, so these days, you just don't need to focus on being an engineer, doctor or an attorney. There are multiple other career pathways. So, that's exactly what we are focusing on. Saying in the maker space, we will have the like station for carpentry, metal fabrication, 3D printing, okay? Podcast and a few other things that we are working on. So, if anyone wants to get into that career pathway, they can come back. So, I'm already talking to the Fulton County School Board. They want to partner with us, saying that after school hours, they can use our facility to guide the people who into the future career pathways. We want to make sure the next generation is prepared for the future and the outside world. So, we are blending the technology and hands-on skill to make sure that the future generations are ready for the outside world. Yes, definitely we're working on it. Yes, we have done some, we're gonna be doing a lot more. And the biggest thing that, another addition we are working on is satellite campus. And the biggest thing that, another addition we are working on is satellite campus. So Johns Creek doesn't really have the satellite, any university collaboration. So we are looking to work with the one of these universities, probably like a U G A or another university to have their satellite campus. So for the big companies to move into Johns Creek, they look at the workforce and uh the environment. Yes, like we have everything else, like the quality of life, parks, safest city. So we need to have this workforce ready too. Once we get this coupling into that one, it's all whole package. So we are working on that, Praveen, we've done some, we need to do a little more work in that area.
Excellent, that's a great insight, like you have a lot of incubation center in Johns Creek as well. I'm sure that the other cities also will follow, but you know, this is a very great idea to get involved and learn more what the city offers.
So this is the area, Praveen, you said like internship, so the younger generations could come back and help us in that areas, like involved in this robotics and maker space. And city does have some internship, internships like in summer, but it starts, applications start in January. So people should keep an eye out on the johns creek G A dot gov and there we publish all those internships like. So there are warranty work and paid internships too, so they have blend of all. So have them just keep an eye or have them reach out to me back in January to just get a heads up on like what is going on. So I can definitely. So the other area we could do is shadowing. So if anyone is interested in the political arena, I always offer them, they can work with me and see how the politics work. So and I can just guide them through and like if that's what their passion is, hey, let them see how things work and how policy decisions are being made.
Absolutely, Dilip, I think this is a great input for me as well, because the elevator gym, which is the hangout club here, which I have prepared, uh created in in this area, it's not this area, it's for Georgia. Anyone can be part of that and we conduct everything. I think I'll work with you to partner, how we can create internships, that's the main goal for that, absolutely, I'll connect with you. And in the interest of time, I know that we have ten minutes, I wanted to cover a few more things. So for those residents who do not follow any politics, they are busy in their own world, what is the message for them? Whether it is younger generation or the adult generation, what is the message to them?
So the message for them, Praveen, is like Johns Creek lacks downtown. So every time people in Johns Creek, they want to go hang out, either they are going to like a other places in other cities. So we started working on a downtown, it's called town center area. So it's, it's gonna be off the ground next year with a few additions in that area. So it's, we identified one ninety two acres as a town center area within the Johns Creek. So which which will have like the Medley Mall and the new park, uh Boston Scientific is part of that too. And we are working on a few other aspects. So we want to create an environment, vibrant environment in Johns Creek where it's pedestrian friendly. Just like if you go to Avalon or Alphata Downtown, so it's a pedestrian friendly, so more focus on walking, connectivity. This area is gonna be like open container, so people can just walk from one place to other place. The whole purpose of creating this environment is the next generations, they are looking for a location like live, work and play. Which means, they don't really want to get into the car and drive. So they're okay, I'm gonna like have a laptop, work from home, I'm gonna do a work in the morning, lunch come down, grab something in a restaurant. And evening, just get my family and walk around here. So we are creating that environment, so that's what our focus is on, vibrant town center, town center, where people can come back and gather. And every family member has something to do in that part, town center area. So that's, we are creating an environment for seniors, younger generations to consider Johns Creek as their home. Right now, if I, if we ask our children, they would not pick Johns Creek over other cities. So we, by by the, by the end of the next term, we want to make sure that that environment is created. So that our kids choose Johns Creek as their home over the other cities. So that is in the works, Praveen, it will happen.
That's very interesting topic, Dilip, I never thought that it doesn't have downtown, you know? That's interesting topic, yeah, that definitely Johns Creek doesn't have the downtown, that's interesting to know. And Dilip, you have been a great supporter of technology innovation and you know, how do you see Johns Creek becoming the smart city in Georgia?
Okay, so the thing I've been supporting on, Praveen, is a smart and balanced growth. So we already talked about like how we can use technology in the transportation segment, like the deep learning and advanced AI is what we are looking to uh explore and evaluate within the transportation sector. The other areas we are looking at is permitting and the licensing for the small business owners, we want to streamline that. So which means, pretty much make it easy for the small business owner to start a business or even an application. So we are working on that part too, that like we are looking at all the options on the AI side to see how we can uh streamline that. The other ones is the maker space and robotics. We want to come back and use the technology, once those two are in place, we want to come back and add the incubation. Where the next generation startups or entrepreneurs can come back and say, okay, I have an idea, I want to sit there, start. Yes, when you have maker space, you have everything to assemble in there. And like incubation place, like a place for the technology and people to do that. So we are creating an environment within the park. So this technology and the robotics are not being treated different, it should be part of the recreation and part. So we are creating that environment to blend the technology with all the other aspects. So yes, definitely we are exploring and one of the council members on the city council is a data-driven person. And he is definitely pushing city staff to explore various options and even the communication side, we are working on that. So it's AI, yes, we can use it, but on a federal and public sector guidelines, there are some uh constraints that we got to work with. So we are looking to the right balance on like how far we can use AI and like, like even the chat, the G P Ts and these things. I mean, we can use it, but there there are some guidelines, how far we can go and what information we can gather from there. So we are on board with that and we are, we're gonna use lot more than what we did in the last four years.
Thanks, thanks, Dilip, I think that's a great initiative and also good luck for initiating all those and be successful at least in your midterm of the next year. So let's come to the next term, right? It's, this is a reelect, right? What makes you as a strong leader and why all of them should vote for you for the next four years?
So as I mentioned before, Praveen, so even before getting on the city council, I was involved in the local community for more than a decade. More than ten years I've been serving on multiple local city committees, nonprofit boards and the community initiatives. So and as I mentioned before, I went through the citizens, police academy, fire academy and leadership Johns Creek. So I have the complete knowledge of needs of the community and what residents are looking for. I used those things in the last four years to see, okay? That helped me make a right decision at city council and you are seeing where we are right now. We implemented a lot of transportation projects, uh city has been safest and financially really strong. So but we can't really stop here, we need to, next four years, what I'm looking at is strengthening the public safety, okay? And as I mentioned before, use the technology in the transportation, advanced AI technology in the transportation to see how we can streamline the process. And create a small business friendly environment where a business will be easy to move into Johns Creek and ease of doing the business, like permitting or any of those expansions that they can do. So the most important thing that we need to look at is actually two things. One, transportation and connectivity, we want to make sure that is all, within the city of Johns Creek, we have the sidewalks, bike lanes and the trails, like connectivity. So while doing all these things, but we need to make sure we have a right balance to ensure that the seniors and our next generation, students and the younger generations or recent graduates have the tools that they need to succeed in in Johns Creek. So career focused environment, creating that is a key element to attract and retain the local workforce and the talent. Which is gonna indirectly, probably directly, drive the bigger businesses or organizations to move into Johns Creek. So that's my focus, Praveen, by the end of next year. Getting to number one position is one thing, but retaining there is lot more harder. So I offer the education, experience, the results and the commitment to listen to the residents. And making sure that we keep it in the top. To your point, getting there is one, keeping there is gonna be a lot more harder too.
Okay, absolutely. So one thing I I missed asking you is about the council members. How many council and all will have to be voted by everyone or is there an area jurisdiction that you are contesting for?
Okay, so our Johns Creek city is structured differently, Praveen, we have a mayor and six council members. We call that et lage, so all the residents of Johns Creek has to vote for all members.
All members, so.
Mayor and all members. But it's staggered such a way, every two years, three council members will be up for elections. That way, you're not gonna have the all new members on the city council. So this year, we have elections for the odd numbers, one, three and five. And in two years, it will be for two, four and six, so that changes every year. So to conclude, basically like I want residents to really pay attention to the candidates, their background, their education, what they are offering, what they have done for the community. And pick the right candidates, because next four years matters, because we are on a progressive path. We don't want to put this Johns Creek back on them, so we need to continue on what we have done, build. So look at the candidates who are running for the uh seats and make sure they align with the progress of Johns Creek. And they keep Johns Creek preparing for the future. So the election is on November fourth, but early voting starts on October fourteenth through thirty first. So in Fulton County, you can vote in any of those libraries, all the information is on my website. So be, and again, if any of your uh uh children are out of town or if you think they're not gonna be available for the early voting or election day, absentee ballot information is on my website. Uh tunki for J C dot com, T U N K I for J C dot com. So all that information is in there, so how to fill the absentee ballot. So please get involved, it's a civic duty, let's make sure our turnout is much higher than in the past, so that makes a huge difference.
Absolutely, Dilip. And what other supporting involvement you want the community for you to be successful in this? It may be financial, it may be, you know, campaigning or what kind of support you need from all of our community?
That's a great question, Praveen, and yes, I'm definitely getting a lot of support from the uh community. Volunteers are knocking on the doors on my behalf of weekdays and the weekends, it is happening. So there are few ways that they can do, like one of the things is like be part of the volunteer group, helping us knock on the doors. The second one, in your neighborhood, you can arrange a meet and greet, you can come back and say, okay, on this particular day, I want to invite all my neighborhood residents so that you can have a meet and greet, there I can share my views and I can answer their questions. So the other one is like, if you support us and if you have uh if you are with us for the progress of Johns Creek, just reach out to us and show your support, but by having a yard sign in your yard, just like that goes long way. So reach out, then my number is up on the website, reach out to any of us, we will deliver that yard sign to your yard. And the last one is a contribution, it definitely helps. Uh every dollar goes a long way, so it definitely helps because uh we, it costs for the yard signs, mailers and a social media promotions, getting the message out. Because these days, a lot of misinformation is out there, so to counter that, we have to spend a lot more uh resources to address those ones. So uh donation site is on my website, link is on my website, tunki for J C dot com. And my phone number, it's on there, six seven eight five seven six six three five four. Again, six seven eight five seven, I could be of help. Again, the community knows like I am always there, reachable and accessible, so anything I can help, I would really appreciate. And I'm hoping that I would be able to get all your support and I'm confident that things are moving in the right direction and I'll get another four years to serve this beautiful city called Johns Creek. Thank you, Praveen.
Thank you, Dilip, in the interest of time, I know that you have another appointment coming up. And thank you so much for finding some time during this busy schedule and giving the information to the Johns Creek residents. And at the same time, this, the the podcast comes to an end with all the information. And I would request everyone to go work for Dilip Tunkey and make him successful for the next four years. If he is successful, we all are successful. We should have a voice from our community where we can have someone to talk and you know, get his suggestions. And I would request everyone to go vote, utilize the early voting and make your civic right successful. Again, thank you so much, Dilip, congratulations and also good luck for your race and we all will support you in all means.
Thank you, Praveen, thank you.
Thank you, have a wonderful day.